They're three apartments and they are rented. It's what kept the. Men can just not get in any kind of.
Borough council, we've been resuscitated to executive session to discuss potential litigation.
All right, George Kelly.
Now, I'll make it clear, I'm not here to lit- you know, to fight the litigation or anything like that, okay? I'm here to present this, a good thing for Danny Town, we're gonna bring people to Danny Town, that's what we're looking for. The only thing I'm looking for is the extra two feet, so they easy for the handicapped people to go around it. That's I'm only asking for. I think it's gonna be a plus to the town, okay? People that go to their restaurants and then afterwards they might wanna go out for ice cream, you know, food at restaurants, and after that they can go for the ice cream. Also, they can see the traffic in town and the other businesses, they can, will bring more business too, if they see people in Danny Town. So, that's, I'm, my main goal is, I spent a lot of money, but then built these millions of dollars, to fix that part of the town, and that's my goal, to bring more people into town. That's what I'm looking for. Like, I'm not, you know, it's good, it's good for, for the, for the town. You know, it's a family affair, you know, people, you know, the, you can see all the people walking the street up and down. They can stop for ice cream, you know, I mean, it's, it's, they have like forty some different flavors.
That's a good question.
Yes.
Um, so what's in that, that space currently? In, in the currently, is it?
It's a hairdresser, it needs to be a hairdresser shop, right?
Is anything in there now?
No.
Is it empty?
Right.
So, with an empty storefront?
Right, right. So, and that's what we wanna do, and they're ready to move in with the scissors, perfect timing right now. I mean, it's well-known place. If you get, uh, you can take pints or hair forks, you can get cakes, birthday cakes, they have, uh, what goes, uh, Natalie things, I mean.
And this is a walk-up, walk-up to the window?
Yeah, they walk up to the windows, okay, and they make the ice cream there. They're not bringing it up from anyplace else, they make it there. It's a corporate, it's a corporation.
It's not on option, it's corporate.
No, it's a corporation type thing, but it's a private owned, each place is also private. And I guess they buy their cream, you know, the ice cream for them and.
George, can council answer a few questions, I know we got several people.
Well, I, you know, I, I love the idea of this place coming into town and another, it's a beautiful building.
And they go.
I mean, I've. We, I, I've said that we need to make this town a welcoming place for businesses to come here and serve our residents. We have a great ice cream store that just opened up on the west end of town there, and I think that, you know, having something like that come on this end, it, it would be great. I also see, um, uh, Roberts, they got a, this, you might think, just hear me out here, they have a car lot down on Norwood Grove. They use our public streets to unload cars even though they've been told not to numerous times, there's a sign put up. Recently, I've seen one car carrier parked on the on-ramp to the bypass and another car carrier at the same exact time parked on the on-ramp, or on Norwood Grove, and they're putting the public at Pearl, using the public streets.
Can you bring it back?
So, what is wrong with a few people standing in line in a public park area, pocket park, to buy ice cream cones? There's nothing wrong with that, you know, and if by the same token, somebody wants to buy a couple cheese steaks and a pizza from the place across the street and eat it there in front of it, it's not Giorgio's, we're not giving them to them, but the line stills there, it was so quiet. Who cares, it's not the end of the world. I think that the positives of this coming into the borough far outweigh the negatives.
I have a question. If we can come back here, but it's not your only time to talk.
I just, I don't know, I mean, um, like Phil said, it would be good for town, and I can see the positives of it. I think there's still agree, or how we go about to, to two feet. I think there should be some restrictions in terms of how the lines form. I, I, I think there's, we're not there yet. But I'm not necessarily opposed to it as well.
I mean, families will come in up there to get kids, get the ice cream, this, you fixing that, you spending money to fix that, to bring people in, and I'm bringing the people in, they can enjoy it. Can you imagine people coming by and see all the people eating ice cream and stuff, I mean, and kids, how, everything, you know?
I definitely would want a survey done before agreeing anything, making sure that.
Yeah, and I'm not sure it's totally incumbent on Giorgio to do the survey of the whole thing, because we're talking about renovating the pocket park here. If we don't know where the line is, how do we know that we're getting the money?
Stay off the line, he wants to move his line.
Oh, so we're just gonna leave this no man's land there, this dead zone in between, that's stupid, that's really stupid.
He's only doing his lines.
Was, was the survey done when they did the common? When, when they, when they, maybe, did they do, didn't they do the survey then, uh, by mainstream?
I have, I have no, no idea.
This is, this is gonna be great, George, we can think up all the things, the business, if you guys have any questions, comments, concerns.
Wait, you didn't, I wanted to, I wanted to.
Not sure I did.
Um, what I'm thinking is, if you want to sit your feet, since, um, we do have other establishments who are using like some municipal property to help their business, like outdoor seating and things like that, what, what arrangements have we made with them? And would we want to maybe lease? I, I see no problem with, if, if Giorgio is willing to do, but like leasing those two feet of the old property for, for the amount of time the business is there, and then when the business leaves, then, then it, then it goes back to the, there's no current, you know, there's no ownership or ownership rights or lease rights to that, but for the time that that, um, that business is at that location, the borough is going to maybe lease him those two feet that he needs. And I see that as a solution that kinda just suits everybody, we're using those two feet so they're not no man's land, we're making.
How long's the lease term? It's, uh, ten years, plus additional five and five, it's gotta be something twenty years.
I think they're there that long. But, I mean, that's, but that's the, yeah, we have to.
Well, you, you want, you want the business to be there for a long time.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's a lot of options in, we, we could, we could even possibly use that and, and possibly get a right-of-way in the back where we wanna put that in behind, behind the business there, there's possibly, we only gets, you know, put six feet back here, we, that, that would be the time maybe to negotiate and get that. Back, back behind the stores, we wanna put that walkway back.
I know, I mean, we're talking about.
On that alley, we, we, we wanna put an alley back here because it's not safe for pedestrians.
We're only talking about this right now.
Well, I know, but I'm talking about negotiating the stuff here.
Well, anyway, consideration. Possibly leaving it to you, you brought up possibly leasing, I brought up possibly getting, getting, uh, I'm gonna call, you look.
I can explain it to you.
Right behind the properties, okay, took over two thousand square feet, my properties, okay?
And the runway ends, you know where the runway ends and then your property?
No, no, that was the only, that was our properties, okay, and we agreed to give it to, for more people. We don't got no money for that, we're gonna, you know, I'm not, I'm only asking for two feet, nobody uses it, there's gonna be planting there, and who's gonna do the planting there too? So, some, who gonna take care of it, uh, there? All, matter of fact, all the plants there, the person that does all the planting right now, they took it out, all of my plants. I planted up there when, when they took the flower bed out, they took it out and kept it to his place, so when they do what they're doing now, they finished it, they're gonna replant it. Plus, we'll put more plants on it too, so it's a win-win situation, the board doesn't have to do anything with it up there, we can take care of it, they don't have to pick up trash or anything like that.
Are you gonna do the whole pocket park, shovel, plant it, trash and everything, is that what you're saying?
No, 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 no.
Trash is coming from there, but.
What do you mean?
Are we gonna be obligated to shovel the snow so we can get to the place?
The pocket park, no, no, they, he.
I can do that, I can.
The key word is park, go ahead.
I'm talking about all the flower beds, I do all the flower beds and everything else. I mean, people are gonna use it, so you say to me right now, you don't wanna, because I'm using it, you, you don't wanna shovel the snow?
I didn't say worry, I didn't, don't worry about it. I said as part of the negotiation possibly, is there a way to get the walkway behind it that we can use and not take and put a walkway behind the stores? That's what we talked about it, and this is.
I don't, I don't know what you're talking about.
Behind, behind the alley where, where Laura's pantry is, some, some point in time we had talked about putting an alley, all that and that, of course, it's very dangerous, it's not what.
Alley or sidewalk?
Sidewalk, where, yeah, I mean, I call them alleys.
Could something answer my question, which I, I asked what kind of arrangement we had with like Armani's or the other places that have, that they have, Borough property have? Um, didn't we just kinda do a consensus by council or, or what, how did that work?
It's a lease.
It's a lease, and did we do that by a consensus, by a vote, I just don't remember, was it just something that the administration worked out?
I don't recall, I think you approved, I'm sure you approved it, I don't know if it was a consensus.
We, we.
What did consensus, I don't remember.
It's like we did, we sold him parking spaces, gave him two parking spaces.
So, I'd say, you know, why can't we just do a consensus and say you can have the, the two same space for a lease agreement, um, scattered on, like Armani's, and then we just let it move forward with it?
I, I'd like to hear from the businesses now if they have any concerns, if anybody has any comments.
Sure, I'd.
Up there or back here? Yeah, George got it, you can talk about, it's not a condition.
Uh, three things, make it simple, number one, what a wonderful place to eat your ice cream in the pocket park. Number two, by the end of the, by the end of the week, we should be finished all the paving. By the end of the month, we should be finished the project. The extra two feet, you would have to move the planer beds back and put a fence up. However, if you don't do that, even with the four feet that they already have, people are gonna walk through the bushes to get to the park.
You're saying you need something to restrict them from, that, from going.
Yeah.
Not restrict them into the park, just like restrict.
Uh, the whole, the whole, uh, the grant was for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars and an extra thirty thousand was, uh, came from private funding. To do what I believe Giorgio was suggesting, it's gonna cost probably twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars to move everything back.
I'm not, no, I'm not moving anything back.
So, you're saying you would want him to pay that to do it?
No, I'm not moving anything back, I'm only looking for.
The people are gonna walk right through the bushes to get into, get into the park.
So, what, so what changes need to be made to the plans that I can't understand, you said there were bushes, but then you said something has to be put up, what's?
Uh, did you have one of the copies of the?
He handed it out.
He had no.
No, he, he.
So, I'm.
Right here, yeah.
What a wonderful place to have a, have your ice cream, however, four feet, even six feet, they're gonna get into the park.
I, one of these lights, are these lights?
Yeah, yes.
And the blue boxes are the bushes?
The blue rectangles are granite benches.
You're saying they think twenty-five, thirty thousand were the changes to move out today, so.
How are you gonna, what are you gonna move, what, live it like it is, we're not gonna move anything.
You're gonna shorten, you're gonna, you're gonna shorten the, narrow the planning beds.
For two feet, the two feet are gonna make that much difference?
I say so.
If it doesn't, then you don't need the two feet, does it make any difference?
I'm talking about, I'm talking about.
You're saying just two feet?
You guys are really.
No, no, that's, that's not, that's not right, that's not right.
The planning beds are going right.
That is not right, that is not right, that's unfair, okay, that's very unfair. Okay, I spent millions of dollars up here, do what I'm doing up here, fix the town, and you, you took all that property from behind it, you didn't compensate for nothing, and now you want to pay thirty thousand dollars for two feet, when you give everybody else?
You're not paying, you're gonna make modifications so it doesn't.
Thirty thousand dollars?
George, you're spending a hundred and thirty plus on that, a hundred and fifty thousand.
I have a question, since that isn't built yet, we don't have the concrete things in there, I mean, I can understand if it was already there, but it costs money.
The pavings, or both, the paving is gonna be done by the end of the week.
It all down.
Oh, I think Mr. Someone said that things were gonna be held off a little bit until, so. But.
The thing on the back, no.
So, you tell me that, so right now, right now, there are no things that have to be moved, maybe some paving, pavers, and that's what it costs?
No, the pavers are in already, the pavers are in, all the, they stay at six feet, oh, is it six?
Hold on, let me ask, let me speak this, so hey, what is it that is going to cost that, make that much of a financial impact?
The perimeter is, uh, is, uh, pavers that are on vertical, in concrete, and they go right to the, to the four feet.
And you put those in?
No, 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 they're not gonna up there to four feet.
Well, would it have to take a look, anyway?
Are they in already?
Six, they're six feet.
The peep, the paper will.
The papers are six feet already, and the light poles, they're already two feet away from my four feet, okay?
So, the pavers are six feet.
What you're saying, you're saying have to take the pavers out, move all that planers back, and put something up to restrict it, because if not, the kids would go in and tear the whole place up, and it's gonna be nasty.
That's not, that's not, that's not, that's crazy, that's not, that's.
So, if you're, you're saying that, you're, you're saying the pavers are already six feet away from the building, you're saying they're not?
They're, they're more than six feet away from the building.
The vertical pavers that are in the concrete or whatever?
They're already there, they're six feet away from my four feet.
Okay.
So, and that was, you're going from two feet away from it, that's what, and that was the, the flower bed is gonna be sort of two feet, but you still have all the plants in it and everything else. I mean, that's not, that's not fair, that's not fair, that's not fair at all.
When you give everybody else, can I ask everybody else something?
Yeah, that's actually not fair, because nobody gets anything for free around here, and nobody really has asked for the community space. This has been, been, this is being worked on for years, this pocket park.
Right.
The plan is multiple pocket parks to link the west side, which we've invested millions of dollars in, and are gonna continue doing that. These pocket parks are gonna make this a collective town, a walkable town.
Yeah, 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 no matter what.
Can I, can I finish what I'm saying?
I am, because.
Please don't interrupt while she's talking.
No, it's not, it's not a matter of fear.
Don't interrupt, she has the floor, go ahead.
Point of order.
Point of order is don't interrupt, go ahead.
I don't wanna be disrespectful, but I, I'll let you.
A point of order is if he was in the middle of his presentation, and so.
Go ahead, you can finish speaking.
He overruled me, point of order is.
I, I ruled on the point of order, I told you I do.
He was in the middle of a presentation, I think that we need to ask for a speaker.
With the thing, that's the way I'm doing around this.
No, he's arguing with.
Dana, you got anything else to say?
I do, I actually, I have a lot to say. I think that asking for community space in a project that has just begun, that's gonna make the town more beautiful.
Could you come up and say your name and address, please, just like any other speaker?
Address it to me if you wanna do something.
Could you come up or please come up and say your name and address?
Dana, stand there and say your name as you can talk.
Dana Petrizio.
You don't have to be fair, he's not there, and you have a building to talk to me, and you don't know what goes on here.
All right, Chip, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sit, and I'll finish what I have to say when, when we're done.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
Cause that's.
I apologize.
No problem.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to say your name?
Or Kobe Martin, two oh two Jefferson Avenue, uh, my question is, in order to provide.
Wait, why did I have to start talking, I'm sorry.
You can start talking, you can talk again.
I said, you have to either come up, say your name and address, or.
I'm gonna be meeting Dana, she'll do the thing, you can talk again, go ahead, you can talk.
Kobe, you can go, and then I'll, I'll go after her.
My question is, if there's a proposal to create a service window on the side of his property, what does the ordinance say as far as how much property he needs to have or ingress, egress into have the actual existence of that service window?
I'm not sure that there's a necessary provision in the ordinance that addresses that specific issue, I would say the underlying legal issue is this, is that if the business will require the use of the park, which is owned by the borough, then there would have to be some sort of agreement or instrument whereby the borough would permit the property owner and/or the lesssee to use that borough space. I, I'm not sure though, like, I have a specific ordinance to cite to you, cause I don't think the zoning ordinance contemplates this specific sin. And, and I, we have the, the borough engineer, I don't know if you, you felt like he was correct in how we had that, but.
That's correct.
Okay.
If we didn't put side windows in and he kept it in the front, we wouldn't be even here discussing this, they could eat and go to the pocket park, am I correct?
Right, I mean, I, my understanding of the issue is that if.
It's the side windows.
Right, the, the lines to access the side of the business would, I think, by definition extend out into the park, pocket, pocket park, which would require the property owner or the lesssee to obtain some permission from the borough.
That's what I'm hearing, because then.
I understand that, I understand that.
I'm sorry, I, I think that's why Hank wanted that.
Just one last statement, just so the council is very clear, the area that he is asking for is within the planer beds of the new design of the pocket park, therefore would not be suitable to service the window without having some adjustments and changes being made to that. It's been a very long project, a lot of people put a lot of time and effort into, as volunteers, and raised a lot of money to help beautify that downtown. We welcome businesses, that's what we're here for, we wanna promote them, I think it's an awesome business to have near this park. I just, my concerns are, what are gonna be the ramifications on the flower beds and the maintenance and how it's gonna impact the brand-new park that we've created?
I told you the maintenance, I, I will take care of that, the flowers and all that, I'll take care of it. Now, the only it is, the two feet I'm asking for, like you give to everybody else, that's what I'm asking. If it, do exactly what you do to Armani's, it's a lease, it's easement, whatever it is, you try to do the same thing to the coffee cup. Okay, and the only thing that changed their mind because it was too much money for them to do it, to put that in handicaps and everything else. The place right across the street is the same thing. Here, I have pictures for different places, you already agreed and gave to them. I'm asking for the same kind of treatment, I'm not asking anything different.
You're taking twenty-five or thirty thousand and changing orders.
I, I personally could not put a number on that, um, I know that the, sorry, I know that the overall, the overall budget is around a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the work that we're doing.
Not counting hourly hours, no.
About all the free hours, the in-kind hours, exactly.
Sweat labor doesn't cover anything like that.
What is this? What do we have here?
You wanna, this is, this is, they're Armani's, yes. Okay? Right here, Haisley's, you gave the whole alley to Haisley, nobody uses it, so they go right ahead, and now, it was a sign that says, private park, you know, trespassing.
What's?
It's Vincent, Vincent Mallory, I started taking down, probably have anything else to say?
Nobody using it, nobody's using it, so it's not the wrong way you're taking that.
But thank you, Dana, you wanted to finish your, I'm sorry to hear about.
Yeah, do I need, you want me to stand up?
Stand up, Mexico, please.
Oh, for the message.
Excuse me, guys, Dana has to, go ahead, Dana, say your name.
Dana Petrizio, I'm the owner of the Farmhouse Coffee and Espresso Bar and the Creamery at the Farmhouse. My issue is, this sets a precedence for business owners to ask for community space. This is a different kind of situation, because this is a property that's just in the beginning of being developed, which is probably the worst time for somebody to ask for something, right? Giorgio, I know you look at it as the best time, because you're like, it's not finished, it's easy to make changes, but like Kobe said, this is something that's supposed to beautify the middle of town, and it's been worked on for a long time. I own multiple properties on the other side of town, just like Sean does, I've never asked for community space, and I think it's unfair to do that, and I think that it creates a really bad precedence for the town.
You already have a precedence, you already have a precedence.
No, it's, it's a, it sounds like it's a different kind of precedence for me.
What kind of different precedence?
There's a tree in that little pocket park next to Armani's, right? I mean, I didn't even know that that was a pocket park, is that a pocket park for sure?
Which one, which one?
It was by Armani's.
The tree, next to.
Piece of ground that, I don't know.
Yeah, that, I wouldn't consider that a pocket park. I mean, look, I, I will tell you this, I own an ice cream shop, I own two businesses that get very, very long lines, I have indoor spaces, I'm lucky, lucky enough to have that, and outdoor spaces, I didn't have to ask for sidewalk or anything like that. Um, but I will tell you that if Handel's comes to town and you put windows on the side of that building, and you go six feet out, six feet might as well be twenty feet, that pocket park's not going to belong to the community, it belongs to Handel's, and their queue.
So, you want the, the handles not to come in, so they come into your place, right?
That's unfair, no, that is, that is completely unfair.
Please don't.
That is. No, it's, it's, it's not fair, Ann, it's not fair, and I don't know what, what your issue is, but.
It is because you came after him saying it was not fair when he was doing.
It's not, I said it's not fair to ask for community property, and I think that a lot of people in the room would agree with me on that.
You say it said precedence already, the precedence already said.
Okay.
It's already said a precedence, I mean, I'm not asking any different for anybody else or anyone.
This is a very different situation.
I'm not going to argue, okay, I'm a Borough Council, I'm not gonna argue with, with all the.
But you, but you are, I think you're actually, look, I'm, I'm allowed to have a voice, and I can say what I'd like to, so. I would appreciate the respect that I gave you by sitting down before, which I didn't have to.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Okay, okay.
Do you have anything more to say, you can get up again later.
No, I'll, I'll probably get up again later, but I don't, I don't appreciate the way that you've spoken to me tonight, and I'd like that to be on record.
Okay.
Anybody want?
I'd like to say, I, I would not like.
Can you say your name?
My name's Sean McGedigan, I have spent millions as well, it turns out. Look, what are we here tonight talking about? Everything up to this point is about parking, George, how much have you?
I'm talking about.
No, 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 stop, stop, hear me.
George, let him talk, please.
Everything.
Listen, yes, you have a question, I'm asking.
Whoa, 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 hold up, you didn't even let me finish the question, sir.
You're letting these people interrogate, George, and he's just here giving a presentation.
Directed to me there, Sean, you.
So, so here's the deal, here's the deal.
If people just entertain questions from the audience, it's up to George, but you can't just allow people to interrogate.
May I, may I?
It's not right.
May I? Continue this? May I continue, I mean, look, I don't, I don't wanna be here.
You can speak as a citizen, but do not interrogate somebody as, who would want to, if you were up there giving a presentation, people started interrogating you, putting you on the spot, that's not right. He has a question, he has.
May we go back to the record when he did do that today? May we go back to the record when, stop, 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 just let me talk. Look, we've been talking about parking all night, I don't, like, the pocket park, that's been a lot of work, that's not my, that's not my thing, right? I think we need to consider what the parking impact will be, right? We, I, I went down, I checked out Handel's down there and, uh, yeah, it's busy, and that's great, and that's, just like you said, it's everything we want in a town, but what we need to consider is, we need to scrutinize how parking is, just like those that, has anybody else here paid for fee and lieu?
Yes.
I have, and it hurt, and it almost killed my business, but what I want is that to be fair for everybody. So, if, if, if they're gonna come in, I would like to know, is it gonna take a hundred spots, is it gonna take two? I don't care about the two feet, what I care about is the parking impact in the middle of town. We're, we're now talking about this veil of hospitality and starting to bring this stuff to town, I, I don't think there's been any, anything up to this point that, um, Mr. Mally has put forward to make anybody feel welcome. I was, I wasn't welcomed to that end of town, I'm happy with what we've done there, but I think we strongly need to consider what we're gonna do with parking when there's an extra hundred people waiting in line. Have we considered that?
Parking can be.
We're not talking about a parking right now, we're talking about.
We should address it, Sean, because, like, one of Phil's biggest concerns was those spots down there, and, and, and another concern, which I'm gonna ask the chief in a bit, is when they park across the street, and I know, Ann, this is one of your biggest concerns about crosswalks, about the hundreds of people a day and kids darting across that highway, okay, and then mid-walk crosswalks, so we, we would either have to move it down or whatever. It, it's gonna be unbelievable, chief, do you think that many people, it's gonna make an effect on, on traffic and/or the pedestrians crossing?
That would be.
Please don't interrupt, the chief is online, just go ahead.
As far as I can speak with any business in town, there are a lot of pedestrians, a lot of children crossing lines throughout, going, passing, plenty of danger. I've watched time and time again, designated crosswalks where people are supposed to push the button, wait for light crossed, that doesn't happen. I've seen people be ignored in the established crosswalk, in mid-walk crosswalks, and almost get hit. I ran a detail once, and almost got hit twenty-seven times within three hours, and we slated every single person that did. Of course I have concerns in this town, but they're far, far reaching than the business level, I'm gonna hear from a safety perspective. So, whatever you guys are planning to do, as far as crosswalks and bringing people to town, you better put a component in there, in my humble opinion, that protects these people or tries to, because from traffic control, I'm not gonna be able to stop these people from getting hit by cars. that protects these people or tries to, but from traffic control, I'm not gonna be able to stop these people from getting hit by cars, it's not gonna happen.
We're not even at that level yet, he's just...
But, but I'll, I'll be respectful, he did ask me a question, and I'll answer it.
I, I understand that, but I'm saying we're not...
Direct it to me if you wanna ask something, please, does anyone else wanna ask, any other businesses have any concerns or comments?
I'd like to contribute something.
Sure, I understand that.
Uh, the, Hank Hamilton, Downingtown Main Street, talking to the landscape park...